Okay, Madam Mayor.
Good morning, I'm here.
Supervisor White. Supervisor Jones. Supervisor Shutey.
Here.
Mayor Bagwell.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We'll have an invocation by Bruce Henderson from the Church of Christ. If you'll rise with me, please.
Good morning. I was greeted this morning with these verses on my calendar. Dear friends, let us love one another. For love comes from God. Everyone who loves has been born of God and knows God. Whoever does not love does not know God. Because God is love. Dear Lord, you've told us that you're making all things new. We were so looking forward to this new year. Now, however, the difficulties of the old are even worse. We pray for the kind of love and hope that only you can give. In this pandemic, in the economy, in our businesses, health care workers, first responders, educators, and today, Father, hope for the political unrest and violence around us. It's all in your hands, Father. On a positive note, Lord, I pray this morning for the new year in this body. A bunch of new faces. I pray for wisdom, peace, and harmony as they lead our community here in the beauty of your creation all around us. May we all reflect that beauty. I pray in the name of the One called the Prince of Peace. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. I really appreciate your prayer this morning. We'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance, and Ms. Taylor, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the Pledge of United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're now on to item five of the agenda, which is public comment, and I'll just start with a brief one. I want to welcome each of my fellow board members to your first meeting of this new administration, and I so look forward to working with each and every one of you because I just know we're always going to do what's in the best interest of the city, and just again, thank you. Desi, do we have anyone else on the line for public comment?
It looks like we have one caller this morning, Madam Mayor. Caller, when you hear the beeps, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Sam Plagus, and I wanted to call into this first meeting of the year to bring attention to the upcoming 30th anniversary of the demolition of the VNT Engine House. It is a sore subject for the people of Carson City and one that needs not forgetting, but I'm actually going to change subjects and instead talk about a conversation that I had with Mayor Bob back in July during what would turn out to be our last conversation. I'm going to repeat something that he asked me to keep between me and him, but I think, given the circumstances, I hope his spirit may forgive me for this one. In the wake of the social upheaval that came about with the police killing of George Floyd, Bob told me that he was afraid for the future of democracy. Though Bob may be gone now, I think it is important for those of us who knew him to remember that he was always hopeful and always optimistic about the future, and that he was a tireless uniter. The ball is in our court now to see that we make a more perfect city that is for everyone. There need not be a West Side and an East Side, for we are all Carsonites. Let us rise up from the despair of the pandemic, the grief of the loss of those we loved, and the loss of those ancient artifacts of those who came before us. Let us look to build a better Carson City to benefit of us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have further public comment?
There's no more public comment, Madam Mayor.
There is no more?
I'm sorry, there's no more public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, then we'll move on. His volume, yeah, it's hard to hear. If there's anything you can do to turn your volume up a little, Desi, we would appreciate it. Thank you. And we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is approval of the December 3, 2020 minutes. Have you had a chance to review? I know many of you are new, so it'll be a little more difficult, but so I think I'll... How about Mr. Giomi?
Absolutely. I move to approve the meeting minutes for the December 3, 2020 meeting with the typographical corrections on page 20, changing item 14D to 15C, and with the correction of Supervisor, then Supervisor Bagwell's signature.
Second, is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is for possible action for the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any issues with the agenda? No? Okay, then we'll consider the agenda adopted. We're now on to Item Number Eight, which is special presentation, a proclamation to recognize the month of January is National Radon Action Month, and I have Lisa, did you want to make a comment?
Certainly. My name is Lisa Taylor. I work with your Cooperative Extension Service here in Carson City. I represent also University of Nevada Reno, who is my employer, and of course, we're very excited that this is actually the 13th year we've been able to offer radon testing opportunities for our citizens here in Carson City, as well as across the state of Nevada. One of the things that's interesting about Carson City is that we think it's very important that each and every home have the opportunity to be tested, because it is one of the most concerning lung-related conditions that is very manageable for any person who owns or lives in a place, or even those that might have businesses, so that we can actually provide a free radon kit through February, February 28, to anyone who comes to our office, or you can log in online. There is going to be some information, if you haven't already seen it, in our local papers, but also you can stop by our office at 2621 North Gate, Suite 15, from 8:00 to 5:00 every day, because we'll have those available, and of course, again, that is at no charge. One of the interesting things I found was that Carson City is the fourth highest radon potential county in our state, and so as we think about the testing of 804 homes, we are, with our information, finding that 89703 is the zip code of homes that have the highest potential for radon, and of course, that's 59% of our tested homes had radon issues. And so if you live in that area, you might consider that. The second is 89702, and the third highest was 89706, and so that's, of course, where our office is, and we always look at the fact that the highest radon level that we found here in our area was 100 picocures, and of course, that means that four is where we're a little concerned. So when you find someone with a home that has 100, we become very concerned, and of course, we have ways and lists of people that our citizens can work with to make sure to look at that problem. And so I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity today. If you miss the opportunity of January and February, in March, we do still have the kits available, but it would be $11 per kit. So we at least really want to thank you all again for helping us celebrate what we think is a very great opportunity, and of course, I'm happy to answer questions. We do also education in the community in case any group would like us to actually come out and give more information.
Does any members of the board have a question for Lisa? Nope. Okay, then I'll just go ahead and read some excerpts from the proclamation for you. So, "Whereas many Carson City residents don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers and the second leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires..." I had no idea. "...whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And now therefore, the Carson City Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim January 2021 as the National Radon Action Month in Carson City, Nevada." So I will leave this and get this to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and everybody get your home tested.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of the board wish to pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Then I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items 9A from Finance and 10A from Purchasing Contracts.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Ms. Shutey. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. So we do not need to do Item 11, because no items were pulled. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 12, which is for possible action regarding the appointment of one member to the Carson City Regional Transportation Commission to fill a term that expires December 2022. Ms. Paulson, you're on this item?
So this is to fill Mark Kimbrough's position that expired on December 31, and we had one new application submitted by John Terry.
Is Mr. Terry here? Or online?
No, I don't think so.
Yes, I am.
Yes, he is.
I'm online.
Hi, Mr. Terry, thank you so much for applying for the position. Just as a little background here, do you want to tell us why you would like to serve, and a little bit of your background, please?
Sure. Why I want to serve, I'm, I guess I'm retired transportation engineer of many years, kind of a resident of Carson City, kind of interested in kind of a volunteer position, and this seemed to meet my qualifications and allows me to stay involved in transportation to an extent. As to my background, fill my resume, which I submitted, but the majority of my career was spent with Nevada Department of Transportation and as a consultant doing transportation design the majority of my career, and in particular, the last five and a half years in Carson City as the Assistant Director for the Nevada Department of Transportation. So I feel like I have experience in how federal monies work for transportation, contracting methods, including all the newer contracting methods like design-build and construction manager at risk, and I guess that's it. I thought my experience fits this position. I'm retired and have the time to do it, and I guess that's about it.
Well, thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for Mr. Terry? If not, I'll accept a motion for the board for his appointment.
I move to appoint John Terry to the Carson City Regional Transportation Committee to fill a term that expires December 2022.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Terry, and welcome to the Regional Transportation Commission. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, we'll be moving on to Item Number 13A, which is for discussion only on our biannual report on the Carson City jail conditions and information concerning deaths of prisoners within the jail. Mr. Primka, believe, brought some help.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Board of Supervisors. In 2019, the legislature, Nevada Legislature enacted a law or a bill that required annual reporting of the jail conditions by the sheriff to the Board of Supervisors. Also, semi-annually, we report on any deaths that occurred in the jail. So today, we're here to talk about, do our annual report, which we started last year, was our first year that we did that, and then it's also our biannual report of any in custody deaths that occurred in the jail. With me is Lieutenant Earl Mays, he's our jail commander, and I'm going to turn it over to him in just a moment to answer any questions that the board might have, but we did have one death in the jail, and I apologize, it didn't actually occur in the jail, but in the spirit of transparency, we did have an inmate that had been medically furloughed. He had a medical condition that occurred in the jail. He was transported to the hospital and died a few days later. So technically, he died at the hospital. By law, it wasn't a jail death, but we did report that to the Board of Supervisors at the time. Also, within accordance to the law, within 48 hours, we need to report. So to the old board, we had reported that, but this is now the six-month review, and we're just a reminder of that incident. As far as any conditions at a jail, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Earl Mays, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
You guys have any questions for me?
How about I start with a comment for the new board? Please get with Sheriff Furlong to get in the rotation for the jail tours and reviews of conditions. We quarterly, a different one of us actually tours the facilities to remain in compliance, to just to ascertain the condition of the jail, so I would appreciate if you would contact him to get in the schedule to make sure that we always have a Board of Supervisor that is reviewing the jail conditions. Anything notable in the jail that you feel we need to address?
Currently, no. Our biggest challenge has been COVID. We've have, our population is extremely low comparative to previous years. We're hovering around 100 to 130 inmates. With the courts helping us out, alternative sentencing helping out, that's why our numbers are low. We have continued cleaning processes in the jail that we have, we purchased a electrostatic disinfectant, so we've been cleaning every single day. We have turned our intake pod into a quarantine pod for male inmates where they're brought in, they're quarantined for, it depends on their COVID questions and so forth, and it's kind of where we're at right now. That's our biggest struggle.
And so we're not seeing a huge need for more quarantine or...
Actually, at this time, no. We're making it work with what we have, and it's been working so far.
Anybody else have a question? Mr. Giomi?
Just a comment. I appreciate the ComStat report. That's helpful, so when you do that again next year, if you can, if you're both still in the position you're in, it'd be great to keep that up, because it's helpful as just a, as a quick little snapshot, so we appreciate, or I appreciate that, thanks.
Any further question?
Well, I'm looking forward to touring the jail and learning more about it, so I'll be talking to you.
Okay, anything? Okay, thank you very much, this is a non-action item. Maybe just as one question, just because we did have a death, is there any policy, procedure, or action that you think we need to implement to help stop future deaths of this kind?
No, we did a review internally, and it was also, we have an interagency agreement with Douglas County and NDI. There was an external investigation as well, and everything that we reviewed, all of our policies were followed, all procedures were followed. We actually had, we have a medical nurse practitioner that she is in the jail Monday through Friday, just happened to be on during that time, so this inmate received immediate medical attention. Like I said, it was unfortunate, but in hindsight, there was...
No changes.
Everything, yeah, everything was followed from our end, and we didn't see that there were any changes needed.
Well, thank you guys very much for your report, and hopefully, there'll be zero on the next six months. Thank you guys so much, and have a good day. Okay, we're going to move to Item 14A on the agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding a proposed staffing addition for a limited duration grant-funded full-time senior traffic systems technician. Is Darren on the line, or Lucia? Which one's going to take this?
Good morning.
They're both on the line. Good morning. Whichever one wants to take us through this.
I think I'll take you through it. Good morning, Madam Mayor, I'm Lucia Maloney, I'm the Transportation Manager. Staff are responsible for operating and maintaining 50 traffic signals in Carson City. Through interagency agreements, we also maintain signals in Douglas, Lyon, and Story Counties for a total of 74 signals across the four counties. Quality of our signal timing and how signals are coordinated through our major corridors is a comment and complaint I hear frequently, and this area is, in my opinion, one of the greatest opportunities for improvement in Carson City. So James Jacklet and I, we research what others are doing nationwide, and we found a peer city that has implemented a large-scale, multi-year project to tackle this area, and we use that to craft a scope that would fit our project here. The project has three parts. The first is asset management. What do we have? Where is it located? Where is it in its life cycle? When does it need to be replaced, or is it overdue for replacement? And what resources are required to operate and maintain it, including funding and staffing? The second part has to do with performance. Performance of signals and signal timing is, in many cases, an engineering decision. What are industry standards? What's required? What's safe? In many cases, there are also policy-type decisions. You know there's always trade-offs. When someone has a green, someone else has a red. Do we force vehicles from the minor side streets to wait a little longer at the red so we can allow a larger platoon to go through the major corridor and clear through the full corridor? Those are the types of policy-type decisions based on performance. And the second part of the project will establish performance measures and benchmarks. What are we trying to achieve, and how do we know if or when we've achieved that? The final third part of the project is implementation. So once we know what we have, and we know what we're trying to achieve from a performance perspective, let's try it out, let's implement it on a couple of corridors. Let's measure how long it takes to drive through the corridor before we implement any changes, and then how long it takes after, and with that information, we can get before and after measures of effectiveness, so we can communicate with the public on how we're doing. Together, the three phases of the project will give staff the tools we need to better manage our control systems, to do it from a data-driven and performance-based perspective, and to do it in a way that's transparent to the public and can also be communicated consistently by our decision-makers. So we put together the scope, we brought it to NDOT, and typically, something like this project, you know, rural western Nevada, assets owned by four counties and the state, this would be a project that NDOT could or should take on. In this case, Carson City is really the organization that has the most knowledge and the most to gain. NDOT recognized that, and while also recognizing that we'd be able to take off this massive lift off of their plate. So they offered to fund it, its Surface Transportation Block Grant Federal Funding, and they also provided the local match using their portion of state gas tax that would otherwise be unavailable to Carson City. And with the funding agreement, we negotiated that funding would be available for the selected contractor, but also that Carson City staff could seek full reimbursement for our time. At this point, we've gone out for proposals, we've selected Kim Lee Horn to complete the work, and the Technical Advisory Committee has been convened comprised of members of each of the partner jurisdictions. Task orders have started to be issued, and during this early stage of the project, it's become clear that some pieces of the project can be much more efficiently completed by our staff. Bottom line is, we know what we have and where it is, and a contractor doesn't. But our two techs that we have, they really can't do it all, and they need additional support. At the same time, one of our senior techs is planning to retire this upcoming December, and this upcoming retirement poses a very real threat to our signal program, and will come at a huge efficiency loss when it happens. So James and I had kind of a crazy idea. We thought if city staff are fully reimbursable with a funding agreement, and if we know we need in-house staff to do a significant chunk of the project work, and if we can use this funding agreement as an opportunity to potentially train a replacement for the upcoming vacancy, it could be a win-win-win. There are no guarantees, right, but the successful candidate for the proposed limited-duration position could be recruited, and they could come in with the knowledge that a permanent position would be available for this project after the project, and then be able to apply for it. This information is expected to aid in our ability to recruit a qualified candidate for the limited-term grant-funded position. If the position is approved today, no additional approvals are needed by either Campo or NDOT. If it's not approved, staff will have to have some tough decisions and discussions internally about what could reasonably and feasibly be accomplished in-house, and I anticipate that some of that work will be completed with a task order for Kim Lee Horn. James Jacklet is also online and available for questions regarding day-to-day functions of his staff and what the position would do, but I will stop there and ask for any questions or discussion. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and welcome to each of the new members.
Does any member of the board have a question? Supervisor Giomi?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Lucia, I spoke to her about this earlier in the week after I reviewed this, and at first, I thought, you know, I don't know if, how difficult it's going to be to find somebody to fill a position at this quality that isn't going to be there long enough, but then, when she explained the upcoming impending or pending retirement at the end of the year, it clicked and made sense. So I just want to applaud you and James and the public works staff for thinking outside the box and finding a way to fill that ahead of time and use money that wasn't ours creatively. So thank you, I'm in support of this.
Any further questions? Ms. Shutey?
This is more of a comment. Lucia, thank you so much for answering my questions yesterday when I reached out and just wanted some clarification, I really appreciate it, and you were so prompt in replying, so thank you.
Any further comment or question? Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion then on Item 14A.
I move to approve the staffing addition as presented.
Aye, second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the staffing addition. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Lucia, and good luck, and find a great candidate. Okay, we'll move on to Item 14B, which is discussion and possible action regarding a proposed waterline reimbursement agreement between Rovatini LLC and Carson City, providing for reimbursement from the benefited parcel to Rovatini for 50% of the cost of a waterline extension. Mr. Schultz, are you going to take us through this one?
Good morning, Darren Schultz for the record, Public Works Director. I'm not going to take you through this, I did want to just kick it off and turn it over to Randy Rice, who is our city engineer. There is a number of staff on the line to assist with questions or anything like that, but Randy, please.
Great, thanks, Darren. Randy Rice, city engineer for the record. Before I get going, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So as you mentioned, Mayor Bagwell, this is for a waterline reimbursement agreement between Rovatini and... this is for a waterline reimbursement agreement between Rovatini and Carson City. The applicant has a project development titled Clearview Ridge, and the development, through their conditions of approval, required a water main extension along the front edge of the property as well as because of the looping requirements per city code. And so what happens is during this process, and through Title 12 of the municipal code, there are provisions that allow the applicant to recuperate a portion of their construction costs. And so through this process, the city has determined that there are two primary beneficiaries to this waterline. That's Rovatini to the north, and there's also a beneficiary or benefiting parcel to the south. And in your packets, or hopefully you have seen this before, but there is a figure that will, you know, help you understand what these parcels and their relationship to the improvements are. But essentially, the city's acting as the administer and enforcing the agreement between the two parties. And the cost basis for this is essentially the construction cost. And what has to happen for this to go through is the applicant must obtain three itemized construction bids from qualified contractors. And once those bids are vetted and accepted by Public Works, the applicant will go through and pay for in front and 100% of the construction cost. At that time, they would submit that document to Public Works, and the agreement would get recorded against all parcels, and then it would get flagged in our permitting system, which is Intergov, for any future developments. So if the benefiting parcel to the south were to develop in the next 10 years, once they wanted to connect to the waterline, then they would then have to reimburse the applicant for 50% of the construction cost. At that time, the city would be entitled to 15% of the total construction cost, which would be taken out of that reimbursement prior to reimbursing the applicant. And I guess the final thought is, after 10 years, if nothing were to occur on the benefiting parcel, then the agreement would become null and void, and there would be no other additional cost for the southern parcel other than the typical connection cost to connect to the waterline. And I think that's the overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does any member of the board have a question? Mr. White?
I guess I need a clarification on this municipal code because when I read it, paragraph four does indeed say that "the agreement shall become null and void 10 years from the date of Board of Supervisors' approval." Paragraph five then says,[769.20][769.60]"In no event shall any owners of property to be served by such extended waterlines be permitted to connect there to without first paying to the applicant or the city the prorata share of the cost described above." So I guess it's a question to Dan. Does it, in fact, after 10 years, there is no payment for the prorata?
That's a good question. You know, before I take that, I think that Todd Reese, or Deputy DA who's assigned to Public Works as counsel, is on the line to answer that question. So, you know, I'm going to defer that question to Todd if he's on the line here to answer.
This is Todd Reese, Deputy DA. Supervisor, if I heard your question correctly, you were referring to the Carson City Municipal Code itself, correct?
That's correct. The code that's referred to in the packet.
Correct. And you are, you're correct that the CCMC does, you know, your recitation of that was accurate. And my reading of that is that the 10-year provision is a limitation on the reimbursement. So once the 10 years has passed, then this agreement would terminate, and there would be no reimbursement for the waterline.
So I guess then, at some point, there needs to be a cleanup in that language. When it says "in no event," that would indicate to me that, that, the way I read this, that after 10 years, the city's no longer administrator of the reimbursement, but that the reimbursement does continue beyond the 10 years. So do we need to have a cleanup in that language?
Supervisor, I believe that the, I believe that the language could be cleaned up. You're correct, and that is one of the ongoing projects of the DA's office as ordinances are revised, is to clean up language in the Carson City Municipal Code. In this particular instance, the way that I would read that is that the time, the timeframe is essentially a, kind of like a statute of limitations limiting the reimbursement rights. So even though the reimbursement says that "in no event," that's still limited by the 10-year period. So once, I believe that once the, once 10 years has passed without any development, you know, the city isn't going to enforce the reimbursement agreement, and the, nor would the applicant or the builder of the waterline be entitled to reimbursement at that time.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I just have one more comment, kind of along the same line of cleaning up the ordinance. I'm really concerned that, in this case, the formula of using the area of each parcel for figuring out the reimbursement is substantially unfair in this case, considering that it's the area of each parcel that figures out what the reimbursement is. And again, in this case, we have the person putting in the waterline has 24 parcels, and the beneficiary parcel is just one parcel. So I think I would ask that, again, this is a conversation for another day, but if we put this on the radar to clean that up as well and find a way for it to be truly more equitable in a case such as this.
Thank you, Mr. White. I had one additional question, or just a clarification for understanding on number five on the reimbursement request. It says, "Upon the completion of the waterline, the applicant will submit reimbursements." I don't see any time deadlines or anything, so does the applicant have up to eight years to put the reimbursement in, nine years, 10 years? Or is there a, is there anything in this agreement that says, hey, you've got three months upon the completion of the, to start the clock or to ask for the reimbursement so that we're not waiting maybe eight or nine years, and he pops up with all the receipts? I'm just process-wise.
Supervisor. Go ahead.
Mr. Stuckey?
Supervisor Bagwell, this is Todd Reese, Deputy DA. I think that Mr. Stuckey and I are both trying to answer the question at the same time. The reimbursement request that you're referencing is the obligation of the applicant, the person who's constructing the waterline, to submit to the city his or her receipts as kind of an application for reimbursement, saying, hey, I've completed the waterline. Here are my receipts. Here's my costs. You know, when the other parcel develops the property, please reimburse me. So it's in his, it's in the applicant's interest to submit that. Without that submission, the, there, it clearly states the applicant's failure to submit a reimbursement request, and the required documents will exempt the installation from reimbursement. So if they haven't submitted a, an application for reimbursement with their receipts, then if the other parcel is developed, they will not be reimbursed because we, the city, has no basis on which to collect a reimbursement for them. So you're correct that there is no timeline in that particular paragraph, but it is in the applicant's self-interest to get it to the city as soon as possible so that if the other parcel is developed, they can be reimbursed.
So I take it that your comment is, it's really their issue, and so you don't see a need to maybe tighten that section up a little bit? And so, I just hate to see a conflict arise that they're just finished it. They haven't got everything put together, and another parcel comes and develops, and then they're out the money because they didn't get it done timely. But if you're all right saying it's really in their, like you say, it is in their best interest to do it, but you don't want to add a 90 days after the, I assume the city has to accept the waterline and the work they inspect it. You don't want to put any time conditions in. You're comfortable as this reads.
Mayor Bagwell, I am. And the reason why is because if we put in a timeline by which the applicant has to submit a reimbursement, and we state you have to submit the reimbursement within 90 days after the city's acceptance of the waterline, for example, then we're artificially shortening the duration of the agreement. So the CCMC and the agreement state that with, you know, if, if the parcel is developed within 10 years, then the applicant can be reimbursed. However, if you put a shorter timeframe on this particular paragraph, we'd be artificially cutting off their right to be reimbursed. And I think that would conflict with the Carson City Municipal Code as written. Now, is, along with Mr. White's, or Supervisor White's, I believe, request for clarification of this statute, could, or of this CCMC provision, could, could that be clarified? Yes, it could. But as it reads, I would hesitate to put a timeline on this because it would essentially act to drastically shorten the applicant's right to reimbursement.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question? Okay, since no further questions, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the agreement.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reese. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 15A, which is for possible action on awarding the Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 Funds for fiscal year 2021 to be granted to the nonprofit organizations. Supervisor Giomi, may I have your abstention, please?
Sure. NRS 281A420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am employed by Nevada Health Centers, a nonprofit organization which applied and is recommended for CDBG funding under this agenda item. In my private commitment, I have a fiduciary duty and a substantial and continuing business relationship with my employer. Although the recommended funding amounts under this item are submitted by the Application Review Work Group, without my involvement, this board may choose to accept, deny, or modify those recommendations. Because the judgment of a reasonable person, in my position, would be materially affected by this employer-employee relationship, I will not be voting on this matter.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Is Mariana, our grants staff, available? Is she on the line? We're having some technical connections, I'm sure, or Sheri?
She was supposed to be there in the audience. Is she not there?
Don't see her, Sheri. Let's see if we've accidentally locked her out. We'll check the hallway just a real quick moment. No. Sheri, you want to attempt to take us through this? And if she comes on, we'll, we'll let her answer from there on.
Okay, I'll do what I can. So this is the CDBG grant. This is the second round of the COVID money that we received from CDBG. And we had our, our work group review all the applications and recommend those that are included in your packet. I'm attempting to bring up the information right now on my computer. I'm sorry.
That's okay. You weren't anticipating, you're pitch-hitting.
I was not, so I'm sorry. Let me just bring it up online, sorry. So...
You know, maybe I can help out a little bit. I really appreciate you giving it a try here. So what we have is an application from Sierra Nevada Health Centers for $45,278. We have shelter transportation vehicle for advocates for $35,677. They didn't get their 97 cents. I think they have to do that themselves. The Carson City Senior Center Meals on Wheels for $70,426. And then we had an application from Spirit of Hope for $70,426 that was not recommended for funding. Does any of the board members have any questions on the specific applications?
What was the reason?
Then, do you stand?
What was the reason that Spirit of Hope wasn't?
Why wasn't Spirit of Hope? You know, Mariana's in my office right now, so let me give her access to my computer, and she can walk you through this. Hello?
Hi, Mariana.
This is Mia McGavish. Hi, for the record, this is Mia McGavish, grant administrator for Carson City. So sorry, I misunderstood the agenda. My apologies. I thought I was toward the end of the day. So in my mind, I was going to be there this afternoon.
So, Mariana, the question from Supervisor White that we're discussing right now is he'd like to know why the Spirit of Hope was denied.
It was due to the low score. It had, the Spirit of Hope had a score of, and let me get to my notes, but I believe it was 55%. Yeah, 55% was a very low score. And so the recommendation from the ARWG was for me to get with that, the staff from Spirit of Hope, and to go over the application and discuss improving the application. So there is still the opportunity for them to apply again for the CDBG second and third round coming up in January.
So, Mariana, can you tell me, what is the grant period? We have some inconsistent information throughout the applications, and so what is the actual granting period that this round of funding will apply?
Sure. For this round of funding, it's a year-long, starting January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2021.
And so I'm just going to assume you'll correct the front-end pages that have to go in for the funding?
So any grant application that has the wrong dates, if a applicant filled out the wrong dates, that's okay because they'll, if they are awarded, they will get a MOU, and in the MOU, we will put in the correct dates.
Okay, thank you. And then, just for, we had some additional items that were in this package of material dealing with the budget revision. Those... Those are just extra pages that are unnecessary for this packet item. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct. Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, I just want to put that on the public record so they realize it's not part of the senior center's application. Is Courtney is on the line from the senior center? Think I see her.
Good morning. Yes, I am.
Okay, can you talk to me a little bit on your projection and what, what you've, how come you are applying the way that you are? So we're fully funding meals, a portion of meals. You get some money from aging. Can you go through that so the rest of this board understands how your meal reimbursement process works?
Sure. So, the meal funding is, it's a little confusing. So, I'm funded a flat fee, a fixed fee amount from the state every year, and this year I'm funded at 90,000 meals. I'm reimbursed $3.65 per meal from those 90,000 meals. My cost is $6.34 per meal. In addition to those 90,000 meals that are funded, we're projecting 18,000 more meals, which would bring us up to 108,000 meals. In traditional years, we're funding, fundraising heavily, using our facility rental fees and different other revenue sources to be able to make up that gap. But this year, we're concerned because the facility still remains closed and our funding streams are limited with COVID. And so we're applying for assistance and that would help, this grant funding would fund 11,108 meals. And the reason we're not asking for the full 18,000 is, in theory, of course, that with the vaccines out there, that our facility would reopen, our revenue streams would reach, rebound, and we're only projecting this out for six months with this hardship. So we're trying to kind of manipulate and forecast out with what's going to go on with COVID, but that's where we requested this amount. The governing board, the nonprofit board, when they approved the budget, they also approved a waitlist for Meals on Wheels to put a control under how much money we're taking out of a reserve account so that the organization still remains financially viable. By receiving this grant funding, this would eliminate our waitlist. Our waitlist on the application was 17. Currently, today, it sits at 12. And so with receiving this grant funding, we would be comfortable and confident by removing a waitlist restriction and supporting any senior that calls for Meals on Wheels to get onto the program.
Oh, thank you so much. Does any other board member have a question of any of the applicants or this one?
So Courtney, what is, what is your cost per meal?
Our cost per meal is $6.34, and that cost includes our labor cost, raw food cost, majority of it is going to come from your raw food cost, the vehicles, anything that's in excess that's not covered, and, let's see, our utilities, administrative costs, insurance. We've, we do a cost analysis at the end of our fiscal year, which ends in September, so we're able to capture what our cost is per meal.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, if there are no further questions, I will accept a motion for approval.
I move to approve the funding as recommended.
Your second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Courtney, for helping all those seniors. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your support and welcome to our new members.
All right. Well, oh, he's back. He's quick. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 16A for Possible Action to Introduce on First Reading an Ordinance to Change the Zoning from General Commercial to Limited Industrial on a Property Located at 900 Mallory Way. Ms. Ferris will take us through this.
Thank you. Heather Ferris, Associate Planner for the Record. The subject property is approximately three acres in size and is located on the north side of Mallory Way, immediately south of Governor's Field. The site is developed with a warehouse and office building approximately 32,000 square feet in size. In 2011, the zoning for this parcel, as well as the two parcels on the south side of Mallory Way, was changed from limited industrial to...
The PowerPoint's not showing. Can you ask Desi?
Desi, can you show the PowerPoint? No? Okay. There it goes. Okay. Okay, so this is the, the general area that I described. Governor's Field is at the top of the screen there. Oh, okay. Okay, you want me to start over? All right. So the subject property is approximately three acres in size and is located on the north side of Mallory Way, immediately south of Governor's Field. The site is developed with a warehouse and office building approximately 32,000 square feet in size. In 2011, the zoning for this parcel, as well as the two parcels on the south side of Mallory Way, was changed from limited industrial to general commercial in order to accommodate the Silver State Charter School. A special use permit was also approved at that time to allow for the operation of a school on the subject parcel and the two on the south side of Mallory Way. The school operated on these parcels until 2018, when it was closed. The current owner of the subject property leases the space for light industrial and warehouse-type uses and is now seeking a zoning map amendment from general commercial to limited industrial, which is more closely representative of the current uses. The master plan designation of the subject parcel is mixed-use commercial. Both the current zoning designation of general commercial as well as limited industrial are consistent with the mixed-use commercial master plan designation. The Board of Supervisors is authorized to approve a zoning map amendment after receiving a recommendation from the Planning Commission. There are three findings of fact that must be made in the affirmative in order for the Planning Commission to forward a recommendation of approval onto the Board of Supervisors. Those include consistency with the master plan, compatible land uses with existing adjacent land uses, and no negative impacts on existing or planned public services or facilities. The Planning Commission was able to make all three findings in the affirmative and has recommended approval of the zoning map amendment at their December 15th, 2020 meeting. Before you today, for introduction, is an ordinance reflecting the Planning Commission's recommendation. The applicant's representative, Chris Baker, is participating via phone and may wish to address the board as well, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone on the board have a question for Mr. Baker or for Ms. Ferris? Mr. Jones?
The building that runs on Fairview was part of that school. Is that not included in that same package? You're looking at the building behind on Mallory, not on Fairview, right?
So the only zoning map amendment that's before you today is for the subject parcel, which is outlined in black on your screen there. The other parcels, the current owner of the subject property owns one of the vacant parcels that's just a parking lot as well. They did not come forward with a zoning map amendment for that. If that's something that the board wanted to consider, changing the other, the zoning for the other two parcels, that's something that staff would recommend you give direction to us when Lee Plummel comes forward with a master plan update, which I believe is scheduled for your next meeting.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I, as Ms. Ferris mentioned, I, you know, this was rezoned from LI to GC as a package, and I, while I don't have an issue with, because I think they're close enough in use that it is an initial, an issue regionally, I'd like to stick it to a consistent process and would request that we do bring back those other two parcels for returning them to the surrounding zoning so that there is compatibility in the neighborhood, and it just makes sense to me. I don't have a problem approving this for them now, but I guess the other question I would have for you is, are there activities going on in this subject parcel that are not compatible with general commercial?
My understanding, based on our business license for the site, as well as discussions with Chris Baker, the applicant's representative, is that it's essentially tile and granite warehousing. Warehousing isn't allowed use in general commercial.
Okay, so there wouldn't be a harm in, okay, I get it. I'm fine approving it. I just, I personally don't like the piecemeal nature of it. I would rather have seen it. And I understand this applicant doesn't own all the parcels, but this is one of those instances, as we were reviewing Title 18, where we talk about the component where the board can suggest zoning changes. This is one of those instances where that suggestion is one I would make so that we can fix that. And because of the way we have to agendize these items, we're not really allowed to make that suggestion or make that change sort of on the fly like this. And, and I get that, but this is one of those areas where, as we had that discussion, Lori will remember regarding Title, I don't remember the specific section because I don't live it the way you guys do, but, you know, this, this is one of those instances where I would have made that recommendation, were we legally allowed to do that? Since we're not, I'm fine approving it, but I would like it to be brought back for consideration to fix the zoning. Thanks.
Further question? Supervisor Shute?
I just want to say I agree with Supervisor Giomi. I think the consistency is important. Thank you.
Okay, if I have no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill Number 101.
Is your second? Was that you standing?
I second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for all your work. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 16B for Possible Action Regarding a Proposed Emergency Ordinance Establishing a Temporary Suspension on the Assessment of Penalties for the Late Renewal of Certain Business Licenses. As a reminder to this board, this is an emergency ordinance and therefore we need a unanimous vote to carry forward with this item. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, I have a frog in my throat. Okay, good now. First, business license doesn't come before the board too frequently, although I feel like lately it has been frequent. So I'd like to take a minute to kind of outline the scope of work that happens in the Business License Division. There are six primary tasks, if you will. First, the business license issues business licenses. Every business that conducts business in Carson City must have a business license. This is an annual review. If the business is a bricks and mortar business located in Carson City, business license is coordinating with health, planning, fire, and environmental control to ensure all their regulations are being met before that business establishes. Second of six tasks, marijuana business licenses. Their marijuana business license is a business license but has a different fee structure. They pay quarterly based on 3% of their revenue. So because it's a different time schedule in terms of the renewal and a different fee structure, I'm just calling it out as a different task. Third, gaming licenses. So any business that has a gaming component, that can be a bar that has slots on the bar, any business that has a gaming component also needs a gaming license. That's also a quarterly license that the Business License Division is sending out those invoices, they're making sure they have their state licenses, and in handling that piece of it. Fourth of six, liquor licenses. Liquor, any business that serves liquor needs a liquor license. That means the Business License Division's going before the hearings officer, they're coordinating with the Health Department and the Sheriff's Office to make sure it's okay to have this liquor license at this particular location, and that's also an annual renewal. Special event permits. Luckily, we got a little break from special event permits this year, and maybe it's a double-edged sword. It gave us a little relief time-wise, but it, it was too bad for the community. But every single special event that occurs in the city, that application comes to our Business License Division. They're coordinating with pretty much every agency practically in the city, from the Sheriff's Office to the Fire Department, to the Health Department, to make sure that any concerns are going to be addressed in advance of the event and that we know what's going on, if there are street closures, you know, where are the toilets, things like that. And lastly, our Business License Division are deputized clerks. So you have an elected clerk, Aubrey Rolet, and what happens is she deputizes the staff in the Business License Division so that they can handle the fictitious firm names. That's a task assigned to the clerk's office, but in the interest of good service to our businesses, we make it a one-stop shop. And that actually is a bit of a time sink. It's, it's busy with the FFNs. We have a lot of out-of-state businesses who are, who are, have a registered agent and they're getting an FFN fictitious firm name here in Carson. So I just want to take a couple minutes to kind of introduce you to the Business License Division. Okay, so forever and ever, the Business License Division had the same computer system, no big deal. When it came time for renewals, we generated renewals, invoices, we sent them to the businesses, the businesses paid. Last year, because our computer system that we had forever and ever was no longer supported, we were forced to go to a new system. We were not able to transfer the data from the original system to the new system. So last year was, was consumed with a lot of data entry and a lot of hiccups, and that would be an understatement. This is our first year doing the renewals and the hiccups are still there. As of this morning, 2,770 businesses were in the 2001 system, which meant either fees were, an invoice was created and fees are due, they paid their fees, they're, they could be anywhere in the system, they could be issued, but we have 2,770. We have 1,789 in 20, in our 2020 system that haven't made into the 2021 system yet, which means we have not created their invoice, we have not reached out to these businesses. This does not include marijuana businesses. As of end of day yesterday, the revenues from the Business License Division for only that business license piece, not marijuana, not liquor, not gaming, just business license, exceeded a quarter million dollars. Fees are due by the 15th of this month or there are penalties. As I said, we haven't even built all the invoices yet. In addition, we have COVID, so let's not forget COVID. We all know COVID's hitting the restaurants and the bars, but what you might not think about is it's hitting the hairdressers and the housekeepers and cleaning people. We have a lot of businesses who are calling saying, is there any relief? Can we have any type of delay? We've just been hit hard. And so our request today to extend the grace period to September 1 is a combination of the two. One, we need a chance to get a handle on the system and we're committed to working with IT to do that. It's not fair to the businesses to penalize them when we haven't even built those invoices yet. And secondly, we want the businesses to have a chance to get to a normal state where they can comfortably pay the fee before we, we start assessing penalties on them. So with that kind of long-winded explanation, I am asking for you to extend the grace period to September 1 and to adopt the ordinance. That's before you as an emergency ordinance. I will answer any questions. Thank you.
Does any member of the board have a question? Supervisor Giomi?
I, I wholeheartedly endorse this and I do intend to vote affirmatively for this item. That said, I understand that we are operating under emergency situation. That said, I understand that we are operating under emergency situation, but we've been at this emergency now for coming on to a year. I think we need to think about, in cases like this, moving towards a more ordinary standard operation of bringing these things, these things forward. That said, let's do this.
Supervisor Giome?
Thank you. So I hope, I just want to make sure that I understand if we do pass this, they still have to have a license. I just want to make sure that that's out there, and they still have to go through the process. This will just be deferring their fees until the end of September, or the beginning of September, excuse me, September 1, correct?
That's correct. The objective is to avoid late fees when, in large part, it's a function of our, our getting invoices out the door that is delaying the payment.
Okay, relative to that too, for all the businesses that are out there, particularly those that are operating at reduced capacity and have a component in their business license that you pay a fee based off capacity, they should remember to reduce that capacity when they file their application so it reduces their cost. If they're operating at 25%, they should not be paying for 100% of their seating. They should be paying for 25% of their seating. And I just want to make sure-
That's exactly right, and I'm glad you brought that up. On the city's website, carson.org/businesslicense, there's a fillable form for renewals and change of information. So any business that has a change of information because they have fewer employees, because there is a fee based on the employee count, because they're occupying a smaller square footage, whatever, even if you're not sure what our baseline data is, they can fill out that form and we will invoice based on the data they've given us via that form. So 100% data's not set in stone.
And I would encourage businesses to do that, and even if we do go back up in capacity, I wouldn't support having them reapply until next year to increase that capacity, just personally. I mean, I think it's with the nature of the pandemic and the way we've had to go up and down, I, they should right-size their business now, leave it for the year, and we'll catch up with you next year. Now, I do have a question on the, because we did have this discussion. Are we, as a board, giving you the resources you need to fix this so that we don't have it another time next year, the same issue? Is there something more we can do as a board? Do we need to allocate temporary help to you to get this done? Because it's kind of silly that it's taken this long, and I'm not casting aspersions at you or your department, or IT, but I just, I just feel bad for the businesses and for you who've had to deal with this. So I'll step down from the soapbox for a minute.
Thank you. At this point, to be entirely honest with you, we are treading water and trying to stay with our head above water where business license, non-marijuana business license is I can't even get around what the right answer is yet because we are so focused on just getting these invoices out and getting the existing businesses squared away. I suspect in 60 days, we'll be able to catch our breath on this and then sort of sit down with IT, assess the situation. We have brought in part-time staff. We cannot bring in any more staff because we don't have the space. We just have nowhere for them to sit. And so we're doing the absolute best we can. I wish, I wish I didn't sound so, I almost feel incompetent on this, but we're doing the absolute best we can, and we are 100% committed to making it better, and I don't know what that looks like yet.
All right. Well, I would never call you or anyone at the office incompetent, so I hope you don't call yourself that. But I would just encourage, you know, our city manager to, you know, someone doesn't have to work in your office to do data entry. They literally could work anywhere in the world, anywhere in the world. And, you know, we had a surplus in our ending fund balance. I can't imagine that we couldn't spend a few thousand to get you some help and get this done so we don't continue to have this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
So I do want to thank you two for bringing this item. At the last meeting, I had indicated that several businesses had spoke to me on options and things that they wanted, and this is certainly, many of them asked me for the ability to be able to make payments. You know, that that was going to be like the best thing to help their businesses survive, to try and let them get to the summer. And so this is also going to allow people to make partial payments so that they don't have to be struck with such a large bill at any one time. So I definitely support this item for both reasons. One, to help the businesses, and one to give some relief to the business licensing unit. So anybody have any further comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move to adopt Bill Number 102, Ordinance Number 2021-1.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record will note, it was a unanimous vote, so it carries. Thank you. Okay, we will recess as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Redevelopment Authority. So I'll call the Redevelopment Authority to order at 9:46. May I have a roll call?
Member Giome?
Here.
Member White?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Shutey?
Here.
Chairwoman Bagwell? Here. Thank you so much. Desi, do I have any public comment on the line for the Redevelopment Authority?
I see no public comment, Madam Mayor.
With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 20, Approval of the Minutes of November 5, 2020.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority for the meeting of November 5, 2020, as presented.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of November 5, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 21A, which is for discussion and possible action regarding the election of a chair and vice chair of the Redevelopment Authority, each for a one-year term, ending December 31, 2021. Indicates the city manager is going to do this item, but it's pretty, might be pretty Do we want to do a motion or discussion, board? Discussion? Okay. Mr. Jones?
I would like some clarification.
Okay. So do you have a specific question or just an understanding that the statute requires us to elect a chair and a vice chair for a one-year term? And so currently, I am the chair, and Mr. Giome is the vice chair. Do you have any other questions, or?
I think we have a problem with that.
Okay. I'll, I'm, I'll entertain a motion if someone has a motion.
I'll do it. I move to appoint Mayor Bagwell as the chair and Supervisor Giome as vice chair of the Redevelopment Authority, each for one-year terms, ending December 31, 2021.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Was there a second? I didn't hear a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was, did you, I thought Mr. Jones did. He did.
Okay, thanks. I just didn't hear it.
That's okay. It's good for the record to hear it. Okay, we'll move on to Item 21B, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of a Member of the Redevelopment Authority to the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee to fill a three-year term, ending in January of 2024. Do we have discussion on this item, or just somebody ready to make a motion? Either way. Mr. White, you have discussion? No? Mr. Giome, did you want to make a discussion or motion?
Sure. I move to appoint Lisa Shutey to the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee to fill a three-year term, ending in January of 2024.
Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Welcome to the Citizens Committee, Mr. Shutey. Okay. Desi, do we have any final public comment for the Redevelopment Authority?
I see no final public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Then I will, we will adjourn as the Redevelopment Authority and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. I'll ask the board, does anyone need a break? Yes. Okay, we will take, how about just a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 10:00 a.m. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
The one we got here.
(Music)
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 Yeah, I thought. I thought, I'm not nervous.
So on yours, it's not a subset, it's a thing that they have.
Right.
You know, it's not like that.
Right.
Is there a? Okay, we're ready to go back on the record? You ready? Okay, we are reconvened as the Board of Supervisors and we will be moving on to Agenda Item 25A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Members of the Board of Supervisors to a whole host of positions. We can handle this a couple of different ways. Many of the members of the Board have expressed interest in serving in certain roles. If you'd like, I can kind of run through that and then we can open it up for discussion. Does that work for everyone? Okay, great. So, the first one, I'm thinking that Mr. Giomi would be our Mayor Pro Tem for one year. Looking to, Mr. White has expressed the interest in serving on the Carson City Parks and Recreation Commission for the unexpired term ending on January 1. I would like to continue on the Regional Transportation Commission for the two-year term ending December 31. Ms. Shute has expressed the interest to serve in the Regional Transportation Commission for the unexpired term ending December 31, 2021. Ms. Shute would like to join Supervisor Giomi as our other appointee on the Carson Water Subconservancy District for a four-year term ending December 31, 2024. Mr. Jones would like to serve on the Carson City Airport Authority for a four-year term ending on January 1, 2025. I would like to continue serving on the Audit Committee for a one-year term ending on December 31, 2021. Mr. Jones has expressed an interest in the Debt Management Commission for a two-year term ending December 31, 2022. Phew, there's more of these. Mr. Jones has also indicated he would like to serve on the Cultural Commission for a three-year term ending on January 1, 2024. Mr. Giomi would like to continue serving in the Nevada Association of Counties for a one-year term ending December 31, 2021. I would like to continue as the alternate to the Nevada Association of Counties for a one-year term ending on December 31, excuse me, 2021. I would like to continue to serve the Nevada League of Cities Board of Directors for a one-year term ending on December 31, 2021. Mr. White to serve on Nevada Works for a two-year term. Mr. White on the Northern Nevada Development Authority. Yeah, it's Mr. White's turn again, for the Western Nevada Development District. Supervisor Giomi and myself to continue serving on the Western Nevada Legislative Coalition for a one-year term ending on December 31, 2021. Up for discussion is Ms. Hicks to serve on the Nevada Commission for the Reconstruction of the VNT Railway for a four-year term ending on December 31. And then the other one that's actually on here is to continue Shelley Aldine, who has been serving for years in our TRPA, for a two-year term ending December 31, 2023. Is there anyone else that would like to, that I did not cover, did not give a, hear something for a committee that they'd like to change?
If, this is Lisa Shute, and if I could be considered for the Parks and Rec Commission?
Parks and Rec? So, we will consider Maurice White and Lisa for the Parks and Rec. Any other committee?
Consider for the RTC, and I would willingly let Lisa have the Parks and Recreation if we could do that.
Okay, so I have Lisa and Maurice on Parks and Rec and a choice of Lisa and Maurice, RTC. Is everybody okay with the remainder of the proposals? So if I could have a motion to approve all of the names read into the record, except for Parks and Rec and RTC, and we'll do those two as separate motions. Does that make sense? Mr. Giomi?
I can do it. I move to appoint the Board members to the terms and positions as read into the record by Mayor Bagwell. Also move to appoint Stephanie Hicks to the Nevada Commission for the Reconstruction of the VNT through December 31, 2024. And former Supervisor Shelley Aldine to the TRPA for a two-year term ending 12/31/2023, leaving open for discussion the appointments to Parks and Rec and RTC.
Sir a second? Second, so a motion by Supervisor Giomi with a second by Supervisor Jones. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That, that motion is carried. We will now discuss, let's, shall we do the Parks and Rec first? So maybe you both want to, I'll open this up to an idea, but Lisa, you've indicated you would like both RTC and Parks and Rec. Do you have a preference?
My preference would be RTC, and, and just for the record, I was just expressing interest in Parks and Rec. I'm comfortable not being named to it, but just wanted to express my interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. White, you've indicated you'd prefer RTC also, but you would take Parks and Rec?
I would prefer the RTC, and frankly, I'd be comfortable if Lisa had them both. That would be fine with me.
Your mic's not on.
Yeah, my preference would be the RTC, but to be honest with you, I would, I would be comfortable if Lisa had them both, so however you want to do it.
Well, I'll just make my comment. I mean, I, I haven't talked to the other Board members about these appointments, but I, I, I know Maurice that you're an avid OHV enthusiast, and I, I think personally it's a natural fit with Parks and Rec, unless it's not something you want. And I know that Lisa has a family history in the transportation world, having grown up with a woman who was the former Director of NDOT. I don't know if any of that rubs off through osmosis or not, but I've got to believe she's got some insight into the transportation world. Those would be my druthers, but if, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Maurice, if, if you don't want to serve on Parks and Rec, I'd be happy to nominate Lisa for both.
A mic? Sorry.
I think it was on.
Nope, you just turned it back off. Green.
Sorry. You know, I, I have a real interest in looking to interact with our neighbors. I think that's the way forward. I do have a lot of history with the Campo Board as well as the RTC. And with parks being an internal operation as I see it, with very little interaction with the neighbors, I don't have a high interest in serving on that board. I do recognize the importance of it with what it brings to the community. I, I think I'm better equipped to sit on the RTC Board.
Does anyone else have a comment?
I'm prepared to make.
Let's take a, let's take a motion.
All right. I move to appoint Lisa Shute to the Parks and Rec Commission, and I move to appoint Mayor Bagwell and Lisa Shute to the RTC.
Would you like to amend the motion? I was already appointed to the RTC in the last motion.
I, I left RTC out.
Oh, completely?
I did.
Well, no, there's two separate ones.
I left them both out.
Sorry.
Yep.
I didn't, I didn't take the motion that way. So you need to clarify, am I the two-year appointment and Ms. Shute is the one-year?
Correct, yes, I will clarify. Mayor Bagwell, the two-year appointment, and Supervisor Shute, the one-year appointment.
Sir a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Giomi to appoint Lisa Shute to the Parks and Rec Commission, Mayor Bagwell to the two-year appointment of RTC, and Lisa Shute to the one-year appointment for the RTC, and a second by Mr. Jones. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. I guess it's kind of nice that people want to serve in multiple places because we need you all. Thank you. We will move on to Item 25B, sorry, for Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Recommendation to the Governor to Appoint a Representative of the Carson City to the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council. This appointment would be for a three-year term ending January, or from January 2021 through December 2023. Mr. Plemmel, you're on the line?
I'm here.
Yes. Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll go over this briefly. I've been the, the member on the, we're calling it the SLU PAC, is what we call the acronym. And I've been the member since I think I had it down there 2014. I've been the appointee to this, and I think I've served my time and ready to have somebody else appointed. Just like for the benefit of everybody, you have all the information in the packet, but I'd like to just kind of give an overview of what, is what the SLU PAC does. It's a, it's a body created per NRS 321. Its duties are to advise the Administrator of State Lands on the development and distribution to cities and counties of informational, information useful to land use planning. Number two is to advise the State Land Use Planning Agency regarding the development of plans and statements of policy pursuant to subsection 1 of NRS 321, 7355. And that relates to lands under federal management. And since there's one representative from each county in, of the 17 counties in Nevada, and we're largely a rural state in Nevada, this subject actually dominates quite a bit of the topics under, under their quarterly meetings. And there's a lot of involvement from the, from the Forest Service in terms of giving presentations. And then, and then the third thing under NRS is, is working cooperatively with the Attorney General and Nevada Association of Counties regarding what are known as RS 2477 Roads, and that's, that's public access through, through federal lands and federal rights of way. As I mentioned, I've served on this since 2014. It was, prior to me, it was the Planning Manager and then Community Development Director. I was appointed as the, as the Planning Manager. It's, it's a planning topic. For the rural counties, you have the roster. It's, it's a mix. It's probably mostly elected officials that they've, that they've appointed, but then there's also, especially with Clark County and some others, there's administrative staff. And my recommendation is to appoint our Planning Manager, Hope Sullivan. However, if there's interest from any Board Member interested in this topic and wishing to serve on this, that's certain, you can certainly appoint whomever you choose. And whoever you appoint today, the, the process will be that person will need to fill out an application and send it through the state to, to request appointment from the Governor. Any questions on this?
Does any member have a question? Mr. Giomi?
Lee, I just, you briefly discussed it. As I was looking at the roster, the vast majority of folks are elected officials, and I, I'm just looking for your thought on, on the makeup of that body, and is it a lot of technical discussion that requires, for instance, someone with the knowledge that you or Hope have versus someone with my minuscule knowledge of land use planning? Or, or is it, it's just curious to me that most are elected officials and, and only the larger counties, it seems, are the ones that have planning folks, and that could just be a matter of, you know, I mean, Esmeralda County probably doesn't have anyone in your role, for instance, and so maybe that was by default. I'm just looking for your thoughts.
Sure. And I think what you said is part of it. I, I think from the State Lands, the Office of State Lands, I think they like having a mix of expertise on there. I did stop in the purpose of it. I kind of focused on that part where a lot of the topic is about federal lands because, I mean, and I think this is just my opinion, but it's a more political issue in the rural counties where there are very small staffs and very small private properties, and they're dealing with federal issues, you know, a lot of federal lands and the issues with that all the time. So I think that's probably part of why the rural counties have more appointments of elected officials as well.
Mr. White?
I guess my question is for Dan. Based on Lee's comments there, Dan, my position as Vice President with the Nevada State Prison Preservation Society, the prison being State Lands, does that put me in a conflict in this?
You know, I think a lot of that would depend on a case-by-case analysis, depending on what comes before, you know, those meetings. You know, I, I've had an offline discussion with you Supervisor White, you know, with regard to your position, your current position as President of the Nevada State Preservation. president of the Nevada State Preservation Society. And it's difficult for me to ascertain off the cuff, you know, but I don't think, just based on what Lee said alone, that that would preclude you, you know, with an ongoing, you know, abstention requirement.
Okay.
Further questions? So is there a member of the board that is interested in serving in this capacity versus Ms. Sullivan?
Nope.
Then I'll accept a motion, please.
I move to recommend to the governor the appointment of Hope Sullivan to the State Land Use Advisory Council for a three-year term from 2021 through 2023.
Is there a second?
I second it.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor Schutie to approve the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, please, just on the question. Lee, I just, you know, it's not lost on me that we just had Hope in here, and she talked about how far underwater she was. And, you know, I feel a little bit guilty putting her in this role. I just, I guess I would like to hear from you that you think it's going to be okay and that we're not, you know, standing on top of her while she's underwater.
No, no, this is a, it's a board that, a council that it doesn't require a lot of time. As I noted in here, they meet quarterly at the most, and it's often less frequent than that. And of course, for the last year, it's been remotely. It's been, you know, it's a half-day meetings every quarter at the most. I've talked to her about it, and we think it's okay.
All right.
Thank you for-
Just wanted to make sure she saw the bus coming. Thanks.
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Lee. We'll move to agenda item 25C, which is discussion and possible action regarding the nomination of Kevin Hill to the TRPA for reappointment to serve as Carson City's lay member of the Advisory Planning Commission for a two-year term. Do we need any further explanation or discussion on this item? I'll take a motion.
I move to submit the nomination of Kevin Hill to the TRPA for reappointment to serve as Carson City's lay member of the APC.
Is there a second? I have a motion by Supervisor Schutie and a second by Supervisor White to approve item 25C's appointment, or nomination, excuse me, of Kevin Hill. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item 25D, which is discussion and possible action regarding the mayor's appointment of Nathaniel Kilgore and Sina Lloyd to the Planning Commission with the approval of the Board of Supervisors each for a four-year term ending on January 1, 2025. I believe both potential appointees are here, and so I will let, Nathaniel's listed first on here. Supervisor White, would you like to place into nomination Mr. Kilgore?
I move to approve by appointment Nathaniel Kilgore to the-
Mike.
Sorry.
You'll get used to it.
I thought I was. I move to approve the appointment of Nathaniel Kilgore to the Planning Commission for a four-year term ending on January 1, 2025.
Okay. Is there a second comment? Okay. Did you want, first, may I have a second to the motion, and then we'll go on discussion? A second by, so I have a motion by Mr. White for the nomination, for the appointment of Nathaniel Kilgore with a second by Supervisor Giomi. On discussion, Mr. Jones.
To me, the Planning Commission is either the number one or number two most important board that we have in this city. And I questioned Mr. Kilgore's application because I felt it was incomplete. You really didn't tell us anything about your experience, and I don't know you. And I would like, I would like for him to get up and speak and address that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. If you want to just give us a little bit about your background and your desire to serve on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisors and Ms. Mayor. I graduated from Paceon High School in Arizona. I was raised summers with my grandparents there on their farm, and that was kind of the early part of my life. After that, I moved quickly up to starting my own business as a painter. I sought further education, actually at our local community college here, moving with my, closer to my immediate family from Arizona, where I studied business at WNC, and of course, started my second business about that time, which I have now currently ran for about 12 years. So my passion to serve is endless. I really can't wait to have the opportunity, perhaps, of course. And I, yeah, be really passionate, quick learner. So, you know, anything you throw at me, I'd be glad to tell you. So, anything else? I don't know what, is there any further questions, sir?
I just, I just say, I didn't think your application was complete.
Mike, you need, sorry, Stan.
I'm sorry. I didn't feel that your application was complete, provided any background or detail, and that's what I wanted you to talk about. And I'd like to add one other comment. I appreciate both Supervisor White and Schutie suggesting people or nominating people of a younger age. I think that we need younger people in our community. I just want you to understand, this is a very important commission that could impact on this city for a long time, and I just want to stress that to you. And thank you for showing up and coming in.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Ms. Schutie, did you have a question or comment?
I would love to hear more on the question about, in your opinion, describe Carson City's best and worst land development decisions. You wrote no comment, and not to put you on the spot, but can you build on that answer a little bit?
To be fair, it was really a, you know, kind of a curveball. It was, like I said, I haven't spent enough time probably researching those decisions of the past to make a comment that would be in any way educated. So I definitely, I just, I saw the non-required fields, and I just kind of got the call from Mr. White. And I just went ahead and filled it out as quickly as possible just to get it in, because as I was told, it was just kind of routine. So I could have spent more time, and I apologize for being so vague.
Oh, no, no need to apologize. I just wanted to make sure that the no comment, sometimes when someone says no comment, it's like, oh, man, don't get me started.
Oh, if it was taken as a negative no, that certainly was not the case. It was just, I didn't want to make a statement from a place of miseducation, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Supervisor Giomi?
Just, you know, first, I appreciate Mr. Kilgore's willingness to serve, and I just want to reiterate what Stan said. And just because you didn't get an opportunity to research it, I just, I want to impress on you the weight of this position, because other than this board, I think the Planning Commission is the most important organization or body that we can appoint people to, because you will be making independent decisions that may or may not come to us, you know, unless somebody appeals it. And because of that, you will be, there's a lot of weight on the position. You're making decisions for the citizens without having been elected by the citizens. And so I just, I want to make sure you understand the weight of that responsibility. And I think that's the reason why we asked you to come up here, because the applications seem very thin and incomplete. And when we're sort of advocating our authority to an individual who serves on that body, we just want to make sure that they understand the weight of responsibility that comes with that. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Yes, I'm just starting to feel that weight now. It is definitely coming down. And I solemnly vow that I will make all decisions based in the best interest of the community and its members.
Further? Mr. White?
Yeah, I would just like to say that when I did call Nathaniel, it was a little late in the game, and that's on me. We did have the conversation about the amount of time and the gravity of the decisions that will be made. So I hope you will accept this nomination. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, then, on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Nathaniel, and we have high hopes for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask the board, so I don't maybe do this backwards next time. Are there going to be questions for the other nominee, or did the weight of what we just said, it just really stands for her, too?
From my perspective, it stands, and her application was complete and gave me an opportunity to evaluate her.
In that case, Ms. Schutie, would you like to nominate your candidate?
I move to approve the appointment by the mayor of Sina Lloyd to the Planning Commission for a four-year term ending on January 1, 2025.
I have a motion by Supervisor Schutie and a second by Supervisor Giomi for the appointment of Sina Lloyd to the Planning Commission for a four-year term ending on January 1, 2025. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to, yeah, I just want to, sorry, just want to thank them both, make good decisions.
There you go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you both again for coming and wisdom.
Thank you.
Just wish you great wisdom. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item 25E, which is discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of Timothy Guthrie to the position of interim chief of the Department of Alternative Sentencing and direction to staff on the recruitment of a new chief of DAS for appointment by the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Paulson, please take us through this item.
Right, the current chief's official retirement date is January 12. That is Tad Fletcher. And Tim has been the assistant chief for a little over five years and has all of the required qualifications to serve as the interim chief. And I've also discussed this with the courts and with the previous chief, and he has both of their recommendations for this position. And Tim is here, if anyone has any questions. And Max is also on the phone line, if there's any questions for the courts.
So this will be a two-part discussion.
Yeah.
One is on the appointment of Mr. Guthrie as the interim chief, and then the other, we will work towards giving direction to the Human Resource Department and the city manager on the recruitment process. So, starting, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Guthrie? He's here, so I assume that means he'll do it. Okay. He didn't run out of the room when we brought this up. So, Mr. Guthrie, if you'd like to come, that would be great.
Good morning. Tim Guthrie, Assistant Chief, Carson City, Alternative Sentencing.
And for the record, you're willing to do this while we recruit?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. It's been just a tiny bit overwhelming, just with the additional duties and that, but we're making our way through it. It's a great department, got a great team, and I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Guthrie? Nope. Okay, thank you so much. I see something in your future here in a minute. Let's then continue with discussion here. How would we like to recruit the position? How many candidates? Anything that we would like to, Nancy, do you have some further thoughts on that?
So as far as the process, I am proposing for it to be similar to how we did it the last time when we appointed Tad Fletcher. And I'm proposing an interview panel that would consist of the two justice court judges, the DA, and either the sheriff or his designee from his department. The panel would do the interviews and decide on the top candidate. And then I would bring that recommended candidate to the Board of Supervisors for your approval.
So, Mr. Giomi?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think the staff component of that is good. I would, I personally would like to see more than one candidate brought forward. I'd like to see us interview more than one, you know, at least three, for my mind. I mean, you know, if you have, if you have four really good candidates, I'd be okay with that. I would say three is a minimum, five is a maximum. This is one of the, what, one, two, three, four positions that reports directly to the board statutorily. And so I'd like not to just have one presented. That's just my comment.
Other members of the board, Mr. Jones?
I concur with Supervisor Giomi. I'd like to see a minimum of three. That's what the state requires on most of their applications. So I would like to see the same thing.
Mr. White, do you have a preference?
Just, I guess a question about how we interact with that particular department. As I understand it, this is a regional juvenile center, and so-
This is not juvenile.
Pardon me?
This is alternative sentencing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's only our jurisdiction. Okay. If there's no further discussion, Mr. Giomi, if you'd like to-
I'll try a motion. Yeah, I'll give it a shot here, pending Dan's scrutiny. I move to appoint Tim Guthrie as the interim chief of DAS until a new chief of DAS is appointed, and further to direct staff to open recruitment for a permanent DAS appointment, and to bring the top three to five candidates to this board for permanent appointment.
Is there a second?
I second it.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor Schutie to appoint Mr. Guthrie as the interim, and for the staff to bring the top three to five candidates back to the board for final appointment. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
We really appreciate it, that you're willing to step up to the plate. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Madam Mayor, you're board counsel over here.
Oh, over there. I'm sorry. I was like looking at Desi.
I didn't mean to throw my voice. I didn't even really realize I had that ability, but it's probably bouncing off of these partitions here. That motion is carried successfully. I just wanted to know for the record, just for my clarification, and for that of staff, city manager's office in this board as well. So the motion, as I heard it on the record, was, you know, as, basically as it was written in the staff report. And that was not specifically to direct the city manager's office to create an interview panel, and it was not direction from this board for the composition of that interview panel either. And I think what I heard really was that, you know, staff is directed to open up the recruitment and bring back the top three to five candidates. And it was not the intent of this board to direct the city manager's office in the composition of that interview panel. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood that that was the intent of the meeting and that that aligned with the plain language of the motion as well.
You did. I specifically did not call out the method by which the city manager or staff should do it, leaving that to their authority.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
That's correct. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item 26A, discussion and possible action regarding directives and recommendations concerning Carson City departmental and staff functions in the city as a consolidated municipality in relation to the exercise of our emergency powers. This is a standing item we've had on the pandemics. So, Ms. Paulson, who's going to start this time?
I think we'll start with Sherri Russell, the CFO. I think she had a brief update on the financial situation.
I do, thank you Nancy. So taxable sales in Carson City for October were up 15.6%, which again is amazing. I expect these to go down. I'm not sure when, but I keep expecting them to start dropping. So for the four months ended, actual cash received for C tax is up 15%. I usually report gas taxes too, so the 250 fund is the one we're most worried about, RTC. The street fund does get some C tax. So the C tax right now is offsetting the 10% loss in that fund. But the RTC does not receive any C tax. So they're 7.4% down in their revenue for the first four months. Now, I did report last month that they were 10% down. So it is looking a little better. However, you know, after October is kind of when the COVID cases started to climb again. So I don't want anybody to get too excited about that. We are still kind of down in the 250 fund. I did look at, take a look at the general fund parks revenue because as you know, July and August are usually pretty big months for our parks programs and because of COVID, they were pretty much closed. So we are 69% down in our revenues, which is about $400,000. And that's, I looked at the first six months of the year, so through December. For pool administration, youth sports and sports were the largest of the reductions, which as we know, the pool was closed. Youth sports and sports programs were not operational. So not unexpected and we are getting the C taxes in to cover these shortfalls. But, you know, I just wanted to report that's what's going on.
So Sherri, can you also give us a report on the expenditure of our COVID funding? We had a $10 million allocation that originally was to be expensed by December 31st. How did we do on that?
Yes. Yes, so our CARES Act money, it was 10.2 million and it is fully spent. There is some invoices still rolling in, which we were allowed. And the federal government did extend the use of that money. However, the state is not recognizing it until they are informed by the feds. So we're still kind of following that December 30th, 20th rule until we hear differently from the state.
Well, and it really won't matter because we expended it all pursuant to the original date anyway. Okay.
Yeah, either way, it shouldn't matter. We've spent all the money.
Thank you. Does any?
Welcome.
Anybody have a question of Sherri? Okay, Ms. Paulson, who's up next?
I think we'll go with the Health Department and Jeannie Freeman is here. I'm not sure if it was Nikki. She's behind the screen.
Ms. Akers?
Good morning. So congratulations, Mayor Bagwell, and welcome to our new board members. So for the record, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. And I also have Jeannie Freeman here and we will update you on what is going on case-wise and that, and then also talk about the vaccine and the rollout of that. So we are updating our investigation process just because of the number of cases that we're realizing. So we initiate a survey during our positive notification. So we call the individual, let them know that they are positive and initiate a survey. This is to collect some essential data for reporting within 24 hours. And then we also get more detailed data with another survey. We are continuing to send out surveys to our older cases to collect the historic data so that we can have a more robust data collection and reporting mechanism to all of you and to our quad counties. So for Carson City, this is the period from December 20th to January 2nd. There were 590 confirmed cases reported in Carson City. This represents approximately 50% of all the quad county cases between that two-week period. And it is a 64% decrease from the previous two-week period. So the decrease is because of the prison cases that have, you know, we didn't have new prison cases during that period, so that decrease is because of not having those new prison cases. And I'll let you know though, that the prison cases are still included in our numbers. The state, during the mitigation and management task force meeting, they will give us a chart that shows with the prison cases added, what that does to our positivity rate in our testing. And then it will, they'll have another chart that shows with those cases removed. And what we have seen is probably a 1% to 2% decrease or increase on that positivity rate, depending on the testing amount also. So it, with those prison cases added in, it doesn't, will not make a difference whether we're flagged or not by the governor's office. So the daily cases, based on a seven-day average, over the two-week period was 42, so about 42 cases on average a day. 54% of the cases were male, 54% were female, and 2% were unknown. The average age of the Carson City cases was 51. We've had 15 students that have tested positive for COVID during the two-week period. And our school biostatistician is still working closely with the schools. They've been out for Christmas break. They will, but we're continuing to work with them very closely and have a proposal for them to assist us with the contact tracing and that. So 98% of the prison-related cases were in Carson City. That's where the prisons are located, so that shouldn't be a surprise. Excluding the prison-related cases, approximately 39% of the known exposures were community-related. 28% were household-related and 23% were facility-related. And the facility-related includes both residents and employees of those long-term and skilled nursing facilities. So because of this, we're continuing to promote those messages regarding the safe practices, social distancing, testing, washing your hands, not bringing, getting together, you know, with large groups. And we will continue to see what happens with the Christmas and New Year's celebrations that were out there. So that data has not come in yet. So with that, do you have any questions for me? And then we'll go on and discuss the vaccine rollout.
Questions for Nikki? Okay, Ms. Freeman?
Good morning, everyone. Jeannie Freeman, for the record. I am the Quad County Public Health Preparedness Manager and I'm the COVID Response Coordinator for the region. So I'm excited to be here. Good to see new faces and congratulations, Mayor Bagwell. So for months, we have been preparing for the rollout of the COVID vaccine. In fact, across the state, we were asked to use the flu season, you know, where we typically vaccinate in September through December for flu, to use that as practice for getting ready for the COVID vaccine. Originally, back in August and early September, the idea was that the COVID vaccine would be coming out sometime in the spring. Well, it came out a lot faster than what we were originally anticipating. So COVID vaccines started coming into the state of Nevada in the middle of December. There was the emergency use authorization of the Pfizer vaccine that first happened and then a week later, the Moderna vaccine. Both of those are mRNA vaccines and Dr. Pintar explained that during the last Board of Health meeting. Since that time, the state of Nevada gets allocated a certain number of vaccines by the federal government and then they get allocated throughout the state of Nevada according to a variety of different factors. It's not based on population at this point in time because the way that the state's approved vaccine tier book or vaccine playbook is outlined, it's based on how many people fit within the different employment categories that are within the different counties. And so, you know, when we look at Story County, for example, the employment categories or who are out at the industrial complex, those numbers fit within the quad county region, even though those folks may live in other counties. And so that puts an impact on what those allocations will be in this region. The state's playbook has been approved by the federal government. We had to submit as a region, a playbook, so Carson City Health and Human Services. We proposed our rollout plan and it had to be approved by the state and then it also got approval through the federal government through that directive with the state. And we have been doing that rollout. So there are few entities that have been vaccinating since the middle of December because that tier one group were our first responders, our hospital workers and our healthcare workers. And so our hospitals, the three hospitals in the quad county region, including Carson Tahoe Regional Hospital, have been vaccinating their own staff and they received allocations from the quad county allocation number. So they were, had vaccine delivered directly to them and they've been vaccinating their staff since the middle of December. Next week will be their second doses that their tier one staff are receiving. Carson City Health and Human Services has then been vaccinating our first responders, so our sheriff's offices, our EMS personnel, the other healthcare providers in our private offices and so forth. We are, we are busy. We are very busy through this week, because I know that numbers help make a picture for us, but through this week, a total of 5,355 COVID vaccines have been ordered into the quad county region by those who are doing the vaccinations. At the end of Saturday, because Carson City Health and Human Services will be vaccinating a large number based on appointments we have on Saturday, a total of 5,077 vaccines will have been administered in the quad county region by the end of the day on Saturday, which is, means that we will have administered 94.8% of the vaccine that has come into the region. Each week, we are required to put in our vaccination request numbers. So the entities that are doing the vaccinations that have been approved by the state to be able to do those vaccinations, we have to put our orders in every week and then we get our allocation the following week. So we have to anticipate how many we think we're going to be able to vaccinate based on appointments or based on what our staff availability is. We are also very cognizant, there is a huge data lift on the backside. For every vaccination that we do, there are requirements that we have to get the data entered within a certain timeframe. They want it within 24 hours, they will give us to 72 hours. I am very proud of all of the partners that have been working with us and Carson City Health and Human Services staff. Our region has made that 72-hour time limit and we are not looking to be penalized in any way. There is always the potential that if we don't get the data into the state and they can't get it into the feds, that the federal government could reduce allocation numbers to the state of vaccine. And they aren't doing that yet, but they've said that they could have the ability to do that. So we are very determined to make sure that that data is entered so that there are no hesitations for our region or for the state. So we had a conversation, I say we, my staff, the vaccination coordinator, Carrie Rio and our lead nurse, Teresa Litterer, and I had a conversation with the state immunization program last weekend about our proposal to be ready to move on to tier two. And we had to provide them, it was a lengthy conversation, we had as a region to move to tier two. We provided them with data about the number of first responders and those who are in tier one that were identified according to state numbers and according to our numbers. We had to document the number of appointments that we had made available and the number of people who had taken up those appointments because we know that not everybody's going to want the vaccine. We know a lot of people do, but not everybody is going to want to. And so we provided our justification and the state has given us permission to be able to officially move into tier two starting Monday, January 11th. So when we move into that tier two, we were given permission to start at the beginning or the top of that tier, which with the way that the state tiers were currently identified, that would be our education staff. So we are starting to vaccinate our educators, our daycare workers and our higher education staff. So this includes our bus drivers and our kitchen workers and our teachers and so forth. So that's where we have that permission at this point in time. The state is in the process of revising their playbook tiers and they are working closely with the governor's office to determine what that will look like. Hence also because tier two is a massive group. When you look at the different subcategories, it is an absolutely massive group. They are not giving us the full court bonch to just open up to everybody in tier two, that we've got to be able to work through those different subgroups. So we do anticipate in the near future, probably within the next week or so, to have a revised tier system that is set up that comes to us from the state. And just like everything else with COVID, things change rapidly and we make and we adapt and we figure out how to make it work. And one of the things that we've been doing is we have been talking with the Nevada Pharmacy Board about how we might be able to utilize pharmacy services to be able to administer and make the vaccine more widely accessible. And we've got our private healthcare providers, many of them that are interested in getting registered so that they can vaccinate throughout those tiers with their patients. We've been working with our federally qualified health center that is here in Carson and serves many different communities to make sure that they have the accessibility. And so the hard thing is, is that I think many groups want to be able to help, but that data lift on the backside is heavy. And because of that being so challenging, we're seeing that there's some hesitancy. But in addition to that, being able to store the vaccine, there's a lot of rules around the vaccine because once you puncture a vial, you can't transport it, it has to stay at the certain temperatures, they have to log that information. So we're cautious, but we are open to any of our providers that want to sign up with the state in supporting their efforts and what that might look like. One of the things we want to make sure though, is that we don't roll into different groups unless it is accessible to everybody within that group. This is a no-cost vaccine. This is, I mean, there's costs of course to administering it, but it is no cost to the recipient. It is open whether you have insurance or not, it is open whether or not you have a healthcare provider or not. We want to make sure that there are plenty of opportunities for everybody who wants the vaccine to be able to get the vaccine when they're eligible to receive it. We do anticipate that the allocations to the state of Nevada will continue to increase when it comes to vaccine availability, in part because as the manufacturer of the vaccine increases, that we will see more that's able to be distributed around the country. And we do know that there are other vaccines that are within probably a few weeks, between four and six weeks of being petitioning the Food and Drug Administration for emergency use authorization. So as more vaccine types become available, more manufacturers become available, that will also increase vaccine accessibility as well. So questions that I can answer for you?
Does anyone have a question for Ms. Freeman? Supervisor Giomi?
Thanks again, Jeannie and Nikki, and thanks to your staff again for hanging in there and continuing to hang in there. There is a light, it's a little pinprick and it's way at the other end of the tunnel. It's there, so I hope your teeps can hang on a little longer. The biggest question I have, either Jeannie or Nikki, from the general public is, and I know we don't know definitive answers, but it would just be good, I think, to get out there to them. How are they going to find out when it's their turn? Are they going to go to their doctors? And I'm talking about general people. You know, if they have a pre-existing condition and they're over a certain age, you know, they need a note from their doctor. If they're, if they have pre-existing and they're not over that age, do they need a note from their doctor? And those are just the things that, you know, I think it's, we need to get out there and I know it's a challenge and I know it's a moving target. And, you know, it's like trying to hit a bullseye on a tilt-a-whirl. But those are just the things that I'm getting, I'm sure some of the other board members are getting. And if there's any way we can, you don't have to answer it right now, but, you know, maybe get something out there to the public just so they, at least our citizens have an idea that someone will watch out for them, someone will let them know that it'll happen, you know? No one's going to knock on their door, but they just need to know, you know? Thank you.
Sure, thanks for the question.
Sure, thanks for the question. I apologize for not addressing that, I actually have it as one of my bullet points. We did a media briefing earlier this week to identify what some of those outlets might be. And I don't know exactly where everybody's going to be able to go, but we do promise to do everything we can to get the messaging out. Some of those outlets that we plan to do is to work with our counties to have them use the outlets that they typically communicate with their residents through, which may be their social media. We know that some counties use outlets like Nextdoor, those types of things. We may be trying to, we may try to work with Carson City with utility bills. I mean, there may be something, but like I said, it changes really so quickly that we're hesitant to put too much out right now because we don't want it to change and then have that be the concern. We've had a lot of residents of certain age groups that have reached out to us based on other information that was shared last week, you know, from other outlets, not us, and it's created a lot of confusion, and we're trying to remedy that, and we were apologizing. My staff yesterday, they were in a county doing vaccinations of Tier One, and they were turning people away because of the misconfusion, and my staff was just emotionally broken yesterday because they were literally crying with people. Because they know, they know their fear, they know their concern, and they know their frustration, and we're trying to work through that. The Nevada State Immunization Program has been an incredible partner with everybody who is trying to work through this, and we are so appreciative of what they're doing. And we push hard on them, and they're responsive. They may not always like us, but we promise to be good partners with them. So, you know, that is our job sometimes, too, is to say, here's where we're at, and what can you do to help us accomplish this? Or, this is a problem we're seeing, here's a possible solution. Can this be integrated in what the state is doing? And they've been very responsive with that. Some of the other outlets, when the pharmacy board is able to, and they've got the pharmacies on board, pharmacies may be reaching out to people, you know, and those kinds of things. Northern Nevada news outlets, we will definitely be making sure that you all are, you know, aware, so that when your constituents contact you, that you'll be able to share that information as well. We have on our COVID-19 webpage at the GetHealthyCarsonCity.org website, we have the vaccine page, and we have it on there as to what tier we're currently vaccinating. And we will make sure that that is more specific as to what portion of that tier we are vaccinating. Even though we're moving into Tier Two, we will not stop vaccinating Tier One folks. So if somebody wasn't really sure in Tier One and they wanted to wait a while, and they decide they want to come, they'll be eligible to come in. We're not shutting it down or putting a hard fast stop on it. And when, it'll be the same way with the different subgroups of Tier Two. So we'll continue to get that information out. Unfortunately, I don't have that exact definitive of where I'd like it to go. As you know, it's complicated, and we also know that if there are private providers or healthcare groups that are doing it, and they're offering the vaccine and they're able to do that, we want them to be able to foster that patient-provider relationship and be able to reach out to their clients and those kinds of things. And we'll make sure that if providers are unable to, that we will be able to make sure that the vaccine is available for their patients. And for those who don't have a doctor, we'll make sure it's available for them as well.
And I would just like to reiterate, I'm still, I work in healthcare, and I'm still amazed at the number of people, even in healthcare, who are reluctant to get the vaccine. My son is an ICU nurse working in an ICU dealing with COVID patients, and he has coworkers who are not going to get the vaccine. And it's just, it's shocking to me. And I get, everyone needs to make their own decision. But that light at the end of tunnel isn't going to get brighter unless we don't get a fair number of our people, and by our people, I mean the citizens vaccinated. So I just encourage people to do a little research on your own, and I think you'll find that it's worth getting the vaccine.
So I'm going to have Nikki say what she needs to say, and then I want one more thing to follow up for, related to employment groups.
So I just wanted to add that, you know, there, we did a news briefing, and some of the news outlets, they reported what we had said incorrectly. So I do want to put it out there that we did indicate that we can move to Tier Two, but it's only those education groups. And I have reached out to the various news outlets that had reported it wrong, and hopefully they're correcting it. But it was indicated that we're moving into all of Tier Two, and we are not. And then also, I just want to get out to the public that we are working on an appointment basis. So, you know, we're doing that so we have a steady flow of people to, you know, make sure that we're not getting a bunch of people together and spreading COVID when we're trying to prevent COVID. And that also helps us with the number of vaccines. So I want to get it out to the public, if you have, if individuals have received an email from us, their employers, that it's not meant to pass on to everybody, you know, their family and that. We have had situations that we have had to disable the appointment system because it got out to a lot of other individuals that it was not intended to. We will get to individuals, this is a step-by-step process, and, but just wanted to get that out there for the general public.
One comment, you know, Ronnie Hanneman with the chamber has done an excellent job on keeping everybody informed on the COVID. I would sure keep her in the loop on all this.
Yes, we, I have been, and in fact, I had quite a few different email exchanges with Ronnie yesterday, so.
And Supervisor Jones, thank you for that. That was what I was going to actually follow up with, is that we also plan on communicating with our chambers and our visitors' authorities, you know, and those types of things. We're looking at how we might be able to partner with some of our faith-based groups, so that we can make sure that we're able to get the information out into other venues. And we're also looking at how we can make sure that our Latino population is aware of the vaccine and is able to ask questions and feel that they get the information. A lot of these employer groups that we have have asked, do we have the information available in Spanish? Yes, we do. And we're starting to do the education even before their employment group is eligible for vaccination, so that they have time to be able to ask questions, or that they can inquire and do their research, as Supervisor Giomi indicated, to have some information ahead of them, and that they can make their own decision for that. That is important to us. One of the things, too, for the public to understand is that when it comes to getting your vaccination, if you're getting a vaccination based on the employment group that you're in, you're supposed to get it where you work, in the sense of, if you work in Carson City but you live in another county, you're supposed to get it in the region where you work. When we are looking at our age-based groups or those who have underlying health conditions, you're supposed to get it in the region where you live. So when the state looks at how the allocations are, they determine the allocations for the residents based on where they live, but when they look at the employment groups, they base it on the population of where people are employed. So make, understand that you will likely hear from your employer if it's your population, if it's your employment group that's eligible first, and you'll probably hear from some other entity if it's based on your age.
Supervisor Shute?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for advocating for our community, and I really appreciate hearing kind of the background info. And I think sometimes, as, you know, a member of the community, it's, you wonder, well, why aren't more people being vaccinated without having the understanding of, you know, the record-keeping and the labor behind each vaccination? So thank you for pointing that out. My question regarding the Tier One with the first responders, healthcare, and there was one other in there.
Is that so long-term care?
Long-term care, thank you. That leads me into, so long-term care, is that really strictly focusing on medical long-term care? Or does that also include, like, assisted senior living, where you have, you know, the residents, there are some that get a lot of assistance, but then there are others who are very independent but just want to live in a community with their peers? So can you explain a little bit more on the availability for those residents?
Sure, great, thank you so much for the question. The long-term care in skilled nursing facilities were, they're identified and defined by the federal government, and they were identified and defined to the state. And so the Healthcare Quality and Control Office from the state of Nevada went through all the licensing entities associated with skilled nursing and long-term care facilities, and then provided them the opportunity to sign up with the federal government's pharmacy program. And the pharmacy program was arranged through corporate Walgreens and corporate CVS. And all of the long-term care and skilled nursing facility entities that were willing to sign up, which was actually all of them, were submitted to the federal government, and the federal government approved or disproved, disapproved of them being able to sign up for the federal pharmacy program. Everybody in Carson City that I am aware of was approved and signed on for the pharmacy program. There were a couple of smaller entities that were not approved by the feds, and they were sent to us, and we have vaccinated them. We have made sure that they were taken care of, because they fit under the same umbrella definition with the state, but they didn't qualify for the federal program with the federal government. So we wanted to make sure that they were within that group, and we had approval from the state to do so.
So let's say, just to throw out a name, so residents, let's say from Sierra Place, would they be qualified? Have they been vaccinated? Or are they on the list? Or is that, are we now blending a couple different tiers?
Sure, so at some point, yes, they will be vaccinated, whether they were done by us or whether they're signed up for the pharmacy program. I don't have that clarification in front of me, I'd have to pull up the spreadsheet. And to be quite honest with you, we know our communities very well, and there were many gaps that came from the different lists that we got from business and industry and all kinds of stuff from the state, and we have been filling them in. So when it has come to, for example, for Tier Two alone, we have added over 140 different businesses that qualify under that Tier Two categorization. And so we've had to submit that to the state, because then that changes our regional allocation numbers as well. So I, that agency in and of itself, unfortunately, I don't have in front of me today whether or not they were vaccinated, but I do know that if they are identified as a skilled nursing facility or a long-term care facility, and they were submitted to the state, if the feds didn't cover them, then we did.
Okay, thank you. And it wasn't designed to wet a specific place, it's just more of for my general information and for the community, so I really appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to give you a little bit more background, so those, all those types of agencies are agencies that we have been working with, with, for a number of years for the flu vaccine. So they're, they're already on our radar. And, you know, we definitely, the program, the gals that are working within that program are checking on them and making sure that they are covered.
Wonderful, thank you.
So, Mr. White? Do you have a question? Go ahead.
You know, I just want to say that I really appreciate the change of direction that your department has had to make. It's not lost on me, the malfunctions that occur when this sort of unexpected arrangement comes along. That said, again, like I mentioned earlier, I understand that we are operating under an emergency situation, but we've been at this for a year, almost. Most of what I've heard today, I think could have been presented in support material. I think that would save us time in these meetings. As I watch the supervisors' meetings, over many, many years, they take up a good bit of the day, a good bit of your time here. I think we need to start looking at moving towards a more normal operation. I understand that there's late-breaking information that we need to know that would not be possible to go in a report as support material. And I think the public deserves to be able to see this information, in case they have questions as well. It's difficult to consume the report as you deliver it, and that's not a derogatory statement, that's just a fact of how this sort of thing works out. And I just think it would be better if we were able to have a report ahead of time. I realize today's meeting is going to be relatively short, but in general, they're not. So I'd like you all to just think about, I think a savings in your time as well, because your time here in this meeting could be shortened substantially if you just gave us the highlights and late-breaking news that we needed to know.
And I can kind of respond to some of that, too, and thank you. So the information that I gave you is in a report, we get that report on Wednesday, the day before. But all this information is posted on our website for the public to look at, and we've encouraged this report to be sent out in many different ways, so the public can definitely look at that on the website. And, so this information, I mean, if, of course, it's the pleasure of the board, it could be introduced as late material, but we like to have it as current as possible, so we do get these reports as of Wednesday.
Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I would just, I guess I'd like to offer my opinion, I, you know, I disagree with Supervisor White. I think it's critical that you continue to come and present us, despite the fact that it's on the website. I think it gives me, as a policymaker, the opportunity to see you face-to-face, to hear from you about how your department is doing, about how the community is doing. I think those are all critical things, and I think it gives us an opportunity to ask you questions about those items. We get in our emails those reports, and I read them as they come to me. And occasionally, as you know, I will send emails to you and ask you questions. And I think, you know, typically when we do that, those questions are ones, as you did today, Jeannie, that you bring forward, because they're things that I get asked as a board member. And so I, you know, is it situation normal? I guess you could say that situation normal is abnormal now. But I find, as though, as today's ordinance is an example, that we passed regarding the business license, you know, Supervisor White indicated that he thought it should be done in a normal fashion, and, you know, I guess for me, government has to be responsive rapidly in some instances. And while we have a governor's declaration of emergency, I find that we are still in that mode, because something could come up, as you heard Jeannie say, things are changing on the fly that cause us to have to make a decision quickly. And for us to take this agenda item off and reduce it to paper only, I find doesn't serve me as a board member, and I don't know that it serves our community. There is a trade-off in the adoption of ordinances under this emergency role, and that trade-off is that it has to be a unanimous vote. And so I don't feel as though we're doing a disservice to our community by passing an emergency ordinance. In fact, I think just the opposite, so that's just my two cents worth.
I certainly wasn't suggesting that we go to paper only for this report, nor was I suggesting that staff not come and address us on these important issues. I was just suggesting that for the, for the public that follows these meetings, that some support material would be appropriate.
So what I'd also like to discuss, I received and I forwarded on to you a letter from some public, because like you said, it really is about answering their questions. And Ms. Thorson was hoping that there would be some way we could communicate the number of vaccinations, that just the Health Department, and you told us today that the Quad County received 5,355 and 5,077 were administered. So the question, cannot that data be reported on our Get Healthy? And I recognize it's only what, the Health Department? on our Get Healthy? And I recognize it's only what, the Health Department, you have done? But I think there's a, a lot of information, correct or incorrect, that is floating out there. And so anything we can do, because I think there's some concern, number one, at 5,300 doses a week, if that's what I'm hearing, it's like, oh, my gosh, how long, so what do we have, 200,000 people in the Quad? You know, how long, is that going to take me 40 weeks to get people vaccinated? So anything we can do to help inform the public with more information, if it doesn't disrupt you actually being able to give them, because that's the also important part, because I don't want staff so bogged down trying to get data out that we can't get the vaccines out. So the other question that I have also is, I am concerned with all of the infrastructure in Carson City. It appears to me that we have a tough time, like the business license, the rollouts of new things. So I'm concerned, does your system that will accept, especially when we get, let's say, to the over 65, and there's 100,000 people to get vaccinated, is the appointment system robust enough to handle that many people hitting it, asking for an appointment?
Okay, so thank you so much. Lots of questions there, Supervisor, or Mayor Bagwell, sorry. I'm going to have to get used to that one. I apologize.
That's all right. You're good.
So, yes, you know, when it, when it comes to the Health Department, right now, we are leading when it comes to the number of vaccinations that we are delivering with COVID, because not as many providers are able to support those vaccinations the way that we are. As it continues to roll out, the vaccine becomes more available, and other types of vaccine become available, and their storage is different, and the data becomes different, there will be more providers. And similar to what happens during flu season, the Health Department gives maybe about 25% of the flu vaccinations in the community, when the providers and the pharmacies are giving the other 75%. We're a significant contributor. Right now, we're the major contributor, right? So it's, it's going to evolve with what that looks like. We will continue to talk internally about how we can share that information in a meaningful way, because we also don't want them to eventually be looking. So for example, that number of 5,355 vaccines, that was over a four-week period. And when we look at the Quad County, the population's about 167,000, right? But keeping in mind, there were a lot of people out of that Tier 1 who didn't accept the vaccine. And so it doesn't necessarily give that full picture. And so we want to make sure that we're able to explain it in a way that is clear, transparent, but also isn't making people fearful that they're going to need to go on to some sort of black market situation and try to find a vaccine, because there are scams that are out there, and we're already seeing them across the country, with how people are getting called and told that if they pay so much money, they can get a vaccine, and they just have to show up here. And that's all false. They will never be asked to pay for that. So let us continue to work on that, and hopefully in two weeks, be able to bring back an idea about what we're, what we're looking to do to get that information out there. When we look at those vaccines, we are also, one of our other responsibilities is to make sure that we're doing everything we can to find other providers that want to be able to offer this, so that people don't have to wait for an event with, you know, from the Health Department to be able to do that. And your question, too, is the appointment system robust enough? The appointment system is robust enough to handle what we're making appointments for. If somebody is to get, eventually get their vaccine somewhere else, then it will be up to that entity to determine how they're going to administer that, if they're going to do it through their appointment-based system, or if they're going to do it as a free-come-type system. The appointments have been an interesting experience when we're out in the community, because we don't typically do that with flu, because we don't have the issues of social distancing and mask-wearing and wanting to make sure that we're keeping all of that in place. Maybe we should, based on what we've been learning with this pandemic. But there are a lot of learning curves. There's all going to be a lot of after-action items, that we are going to be looking at how we operate as a health department, so that these types of things don't, becomes, they become more second nature, rather than on the fly, so that our on-the-fly learning actually becomes part of our integrated process. So yes, your question about the robustness of the appointment system, it is capable of handling what we are doing as a department. We are not making appointments for all of the entities in the Quad Counties.
My, my concern was, was more, you get to one of the tiers, or one of the subcomponents in the tier, and there are 50,000 people eligible under that tier. They're all going to be, how are you giving an appointment to, let's just pretend it's this board, right? All five of us hit the system at the same time, because we're all eligible now in this subset. That's more what I'm concerned, is you're going to have 10,000 people. Let me just be blunt, the over 65, I'm not sure why they're in Tier 4, and I'm probably going to guess it's because of the number of vaccines available. But that's the most vulnerable population that we have. That's the one that's suffering the most under the conditions. I'm going to guess that you're going to get a big push for that. And I just want to make sure that, one, we have the staff to get the vaccinations out to that group, and that they can make their appointments. That, that's what I'm interested in.
That's my question. Do you have the staff just to take the appointments? I can see those phone lines being inundated.
So that's a great question. So both of them are great questions. Thank you. The appointments are done through an online system, and if somebody doesn't have the online capacity, they're able to call the hotline, and they will be able to make their appointment through the hotline when they are eligible to be able to get the vaccine. So people should not be calling the COVID hotline today to get a vaccine appointment. Please do not do that. When you are eligible, you will be notified when you can do that. But it is set up as an appointment-based system. It is an online link. It is a link for our employment groups that we send to their employer, point of contact, and then it is distributed across there. There is not an entity in this entire state that is able to do all of a single group within a week, within two weeks. It will take time. Okay? So it will take time, and that will require more patience of the public. I realize that we have, as a public, been patient with COVID since February of 2020, and we're going to need to be patient with the vaccination process. This will take several months for the state of Nevada to be able to go through the vaccination process. This is not, Tier 1 went quickly. Tier 2 is massive compared to Tier 1. Astronomical, gigantic, massive, whatever adjective you want to use, it is significantly different. So it is going to take us time. We are actually moving forward ahead of many jurisdictions. They are still vaccinating Tier 1 in the South. They have got, they've got quite a while still before they're going to be able to be able to move forward. It's going to have some differences of what that looks like. So the public needs to have their patience. And again, when the revised tiers or the picture of what that looks like comes out, there will be more information that comes out, and we may have to change, we may not have to change. I don't, I don't know what that's going to look like just yet. But we are, trust me, every day, we are in the hallways, having these meetings of, how can we make sure that we're getting it out? How can we make sure? And then also having those conversations of, what is the realistic percentage of the population that we believe can be vaccinated in the region with the providers who have signed up, including the Health Department? What is that realistic number? And as, as we've done with the roadshow with COVID for testing, and we've done with everything else, we roadshow the vaccine events. And we're very cautious about what that is. We're very proud to be able to say that we have not wasted a single vaccine at this point. So we have been able to, because we have those relationships within our communities, we've been able to call those first responder agencies or those other groups and say, we have three vaccines. We had 18 no-shows, and we have three vaccines left. Do you have anybody who's in office that wants it today? You know, that maybe has a later appointment, and they're able to cancel it and get in that day. And so we've been, we've been very cautious with that. It's a challenge, that's for sure.
And, you know, Mayor Bagwell, I just would, would let you know that, that part of what you're asking about is the responsibility isn't all going to be on our Health and Human Services Department to get everyone who's 65 and older. There are organizations such as ours that are signing up to provide vaccines for not only their, their employees, but their patients as well. And as soon as those agencies get the okay to drop the flag on a certain level at Tier 1, those agencies will, as, as Jeannie said, and those pharmacies will be making those outbound calls to their patients, saying, hey, you, you're in a category that now can be vaccinated. We'd like to make an appointment for you to come on in and get done. So it isn't all going to be on Health and Human Services to get that done. But, you know, I think what Lori is saying is, if you, as a department, have a need that we, as a board, can support, then, you know, please bring that to us, so that we can give you the tools you need to, to take care of as many people as we can.
I think the other thing that, for me, is important, is the last statement that you made. I do not want to see vaccines expire, because we somehow couldn't get there in time. And I, I don't think that's the same answer across the nation. And so that's what I'm really after, is, please don't let any vaccine go to waste. If there's something, like, like Supervisor Giomi said, that we need to do, we want to, because wasting or expiring the vaccine, when we have people that, I know we could have lines around this place for people to get vaccines. So I'm happy to hear that you're indicating that none of our vaccine is expiring. Great job.
And I would just like to add, you know, the, the individuals working on this vaccination outreach, I mean, they've really been reaching out to a lot of different partners. It's that partnership, you know, we've got the partnership of the hospitals, the FQHC, different doctors' offices, you know, as Jeannie, the pharmacies. I mean, we've got a lot of people that are within these partnerships that are going to help give these vaccinations as we move forward. Are they, and they are going to have their own method of getting those individuals within their offices or their facility. It's not all going to be on our appointment system. That's just ours. And then, to your point about, you know, the vaccine itself, I don't, I don't see any problem with using it before the expiration date. I don't know how long that expiration date is right now, but it's, it's going out as soon as it's coming in. We do have the challenge of, the CDC has indicated that once a vial has been punctured, we cannot transfer it. So, and that is where Jeannie was talking about, that we're calling individuals and saying, you know, you're, you're within this tier, and you may have an appointment in a week, but we've got some vaccine now. And that is a very time-consuming process for individuals to do, but we feel that that's a very important activity to do, to make sure that all the vaccine is being used.
I really want to applaud you for that, because, again, there's a lot of people that want it. So I want to assure everyone in Carson City that our staff is delivering every vaccination that they can. So thank you very much for that.
No problem. We will not hoard it, and we will make sure that it gets out there, and we are not wasting it. There is not going to be a waste or a hoarding situation at all in our community.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else have any comments, or Ms. Paulson?
I just wanted to make a comment while Jeannie and Nikki were still here. So I had a chance to participate in a testing event last week. And I just have to say, I know they've probably heard this many times, so impressed with everyone that was involved in the event. You know, first and foremost, the Health Department, that's been doing this for over 10 months. I mean, you would never know that this is probably their, you know, 200th time, you know, running the event. They still had the same, you know, energy and enthusiasm. And the National Guard that's helping us, there was probably 10 to 15 people from the National Guard there. And they just showed up, took charge, got everything set up, and were ready to go. We also have Carson City staff and other departments that have volunteered to go out and participate in these testing events, you know, in addition to doing, you know, their, their regular job. And I think there's some, maybe some other volunteers that were there as well, from the community. So for it not being a very fun experience for the people that are being tested, it was a very positive environment. And several times, we had people from the vehicles, you know, shouting out to everyone, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. So I just wanted to relay that to everyone.
Thank you, Nancy, for that. And, and that does remind me that, you know, as we're doing vaccinations, we're still doing testing. So still taking the testing show on the road, as we're saying, and then still doing testing at the Health Department for right now. And, and as Nancy pointed out, this is a partnership. You know, we're partnering with all the different counties, the city, to do these events. It's, we can't do it alone. And we need the help of others. And we're very fortunate that others have stepped up and helped us. So that, that just shows that partnership that's happening.
Does anybody have any further questions?
Well, again, thank you both so very much for your hard work on behalf of all the, I guess I have to say, the Quad, but I'll say on behalf of the Carson City residents, thank you so much.
And I think Supervisor Giomi just, he wants to see that we're still alive. We are. A little grayer, eye bags, but we're here.
Thank you again. Ms. Paulson, is there anything else under this item?
No.
No? Okay. Then we're going to move on to Agenda Item 27, which is our non-action items, future agenda items, statuses, communications, any correspondence, and status reports. I will do one, just so that Ms. Travis, Robin Travis, sent a request, and it was submitted as late material. I just wanted to put it out on the record. She is asking, indicating that her road on La Pier is really in poor shape, and is looking for some assistance. But I want to make sure she knows that we all received it, and that our staff is going to be contacting her and going out to look at it, to determine if anything can be accomplished, or when and such. So just want to put that out on the record as a communication that I had. Does anyone else on the board have a communication or anything they want to share? Once you start doing your committees and serving, you can give us briefings and reports. So you'll get your wings here really quickly as you start serving. Mr. Jones?
So who has the list of when the meetings are for the dates for the next board? Will you put, somebody put that out?
What Mr. Jones is asking is the appointments that we did today, that everyone be given the schedule, so they know when their first meeting, you're on today, tonight, no, that the city manager's office will be making sure that each member of the board understands when their meetings are and the contacts, because some of them, like Western Nevada Development Authority, some of those, they'll contact those agencies and, and get your appointments to them and stuff. Okay. Ms. Paulson, do you have anything under this item to share?
I don't have anything. I think Stephanie has a few things.
Ms. Hicks?
Thank you. Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager, for the record. I just wanted to pass along some good news to our board that I received through our Parks and Recreation Director, Jennifer Budge. And this is actually a thank you and congratulation to some of our project partners out in the community. This year, through the 2021 Recreational Trails Grant Program, Muscle Powered has actually received two grants. And by their facilitation of the grants, even though we participate in the applications and the projects, it is really a true benefit to the city that they do the management and administration of the grants for us. So the projects that they received are for the Lincoln Bypass Trail, in which they received $38,000, and that's going to upgrade two miles of the existing trail, and construct two miles of new trail that will connect Carson City with the Kings Canyon end of the Ash to Kings Trail. And so that effectively creates a bypass to the Kings Canyon Road, which is the old Lincoln Highway. Their second grant application they were awarded funding for is the Capitol to Tahoe Trail, and they received just under $122,000 for that project, which will construct seven miles of trail and two bridges to connect the Ash to Kings Trail with the Lake Tahoe Nevada State Park. So together, these two projects will create the first non-motorized, single-track connection between Carson City and Lake Tahoe, and will indirectly connect the Pacific with the Pacific Crest Trail. So again, we just are very thankful for those partners. So, again, we just are very thankful for those partners. I also wanted to advise that, um, under that same program, Carson River, pardon me, Carson Water Subconservancy District received a grant for Carson River Aquatic Trail improvements, just, um, over $122,000. This project is a tri-county project, and it will add eight miles of section to the aquatic trail system. So, that provides an opportunity for a full day, 13-mile flat water float trip manageable by canoeers, kayakers, and stand-up paddleboarders, if you dare. And the project will include construction of a takeout above the Mexican Dam that will utilize Carson City's recently completed Mexican Dam bypass in order to create a safe portage around the dam. So, that's a very exciting project as well. Lastly, for the 2021 Nevada Off-Highway Vehicle Program, um, Great Basin Institute was awarded just over $87,000 for an OHV technical program, and that will fund a two-person crew for the summer to help with projects throughout Western Nevada, including our OHV area on Prison Hill. So, again, we just want to extend congratulations and thanks to our project partners, and, um, you know, just express what a wonderful opportunity this is for our city and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Does anyone else have anything under this agenda item to bring forward? Last chance. Here it. Okay, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 28. Desi, do we have any public comment?
There is no final public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, I would just like to end again with a thank you and welcome to everyone. I think we had a great meeting. I'm, I'm very excited to work with, uh, each and every one of you, and, uh, hope that you, uh, felt proud that you're, um, on this board, and again, I look forward to working with all of you. So, if there is no further action to come before us, the, um, meeting is adjourned at, uh, 12:42. Thank you. 11:00. Oh, that's true. It is 11:00. I'm, I'm trying to eat lunch.